Good evening everyone and welcome to our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, September the 8th, 2025. And I will call the meeting to order. May I have a mover please? Moved by Council Cressman, seconded by Council Dunstall, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And we will have a recommendation to go into a closed meeting in accordance with section 239, 3.1 of the municipal act to consider the sale of land for tax arrears, and section 239, 3.1 educational or training session. May I have a mover please? Moved by Council Martin, seconded by Council Cressman, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And we will reconvene once that is done.
Thank you.
The township's corporate leadership team is the mayor and council as a body. Its senior staff is a senior administration team. We've had this chat before. In any case, the "launched to" the corporate leadership team, by whom? On April 12th, 2022, who or what official body told the corporate leadership team to implement this project? I couldn't find any minutes of council directing such an action, so I request without submitting an FOA again, somebody can tell me hopefully who started that project that cost $65,536 eventually. On May 30th, 2024, I submitted an FOI 2024-04 asking for a copy of the final report that was submitted by the successful bidder to the township at Willman. That cost me five bucks. I did not get the document I requested. On June 17th, the township sent me a response and it outlined four of the five things that I had originally requested. Their May 30th response included the five, which was the final report. The June 17th report omitted the final report and its decision was, access is granted in full to part of the records, access denied in part to the remainder of the records under section blah blah blah. Just the final report seemed to disappear in existence. I submitted an appeal to the Information and Privacy Commissioner.
Barry, I do just want to remind you, this is about the service delivery review bid for us.
If you can please relate it to that now? Four questions. The township claimed that John White soul and company had been paid $65,536 but never submitted a final report. I called John White soul. He said he'd been paid approximately $56,000 and that he had fulfilled all the terms of the RFP, including quote, submit a final AODA compliant version of the final report. He said that he had contacted, because I initially had contacted him by email, and he then called the township to inquire what's going on. And he said that documents had all been submitted, they all belong to the township, and if I wanted, contact the HR department, and he gave me a specific name. Here are my questions. I have still not received a copy of that final report, which is apparently going to be repeated here tonight with the CAO report. Number one, who started the project in '22 that cost $65,000? Where is the final report submitted by White soul and company? That's an organizational review and people plan submitted to the township at cost of about $65,536. When will I get a copy of that final report that I've invested $43.80 to have access to? And between 2022 and '25, there was significant reorganization occurring, changing of job titles, who was in various roles, and there was hiring going on. If senior staff was following a plan, where is it? And why has the public not been made aware of that plan? A reasonable person might ask, did the township lose it?
quote, "Whitesaline Company Township at Willment Organizational Structure Review and People Plan Overview." There was a PDF attachment supplied in the minutes. Page three of nine of the official minutes of that meeting had the following as a summative report of that agenda item, and I quote, "S. Chambers, Chief Administrative Officer, reported that Whitesaline Company has been engaged to conduct an organizational structure review and people plan. The project was launched to the corporate leadership team on April 12, 2022. S. Chambers introduced Dr. John Whitesal, who provided an overview of the organizational review and people plan, including its purpose and phases. Dr. Whitesal stated that the importance of aligning the review and people plan with the mission and values of the corporation, as well as its strategic goals, in order to achieve overall operational effectiveness in support of the corporation's vision." Let me repeat part of that quote. "The project was launched 'to the corporate leadership team' on April 12, 2022. In my opinion, the township's corporate leadership team is the mayor and council as a body. Its senior staff is a senior administration team." We've had this chat before. In any case, the, quote, "launched 'to the corporate leadership team'." By whom? On April 12, 2022, who or what official body told the corporate leadership team to implement this project? I couldn't find any minutes of council directing such an action, so I request, without submitting an FOA again, somebody can tell me, hopefully, who started that project that cost $65,536 eventually. On May 30, 2024, I submitted an FOI 202404, asking for a copy of the final report that was submitted by the successful bidder to the Township at Willment. That cost me five bucks. I did not get the document I requested. On June 17, the township sent me a response, and it outlined four of the five things that I had originally requested. Their May 30 response included the five, which was the final report. The June 17 report omitted the final report, and its decision was, "Access is granted in full to part of the records, access denied in part to the remainder of the records, under section blah, blah, blah." Just the final report seemed to disappear in existence. I submitted an appeal to the Information and Privacy Commissioner. Cost me another $25.
Barry, I do just want to remind you, this is about the Service Delivery Review bid for us. If you can please relate it to that now.
Four questions. The township claimed that John Whitesal and Company had been paid $65,536 but never submitted a final report. I called John Whitesal. He said he'd been paid approximately $56,000, and that he had fulfilled all the terms of the RFP, including, quote, "Submit a final AODA compliant version of the final report." He said that he had contacted, because I initially had contacted him by email, and he then called the township to inquire what's going on. And he said that documents had all been submitted, they all belong to the township, and if I wanted, contact the HR department. And he gave me a specific name. Here are my questions. I have still not received a copy of that final report, which is apparently going to be repeated here tonight with the CAO report. Number one, who started the project in '22 that cost $65,000? Where is the final report submitted by Whitesal and Company? That's an organizational review and people plan submitted to the township at cost of about $65,536. When will I get a copy of that final report that I've invested $43.80 to have access to? And between 2022 and '25, there was significant reorganization occurring, changing of job titles, who was in various roles, and there was hiring going on. If senior staff was following a plan, where is it? And why has the public not been made aware of that plan? A reasonable person might ask, did the township lose it? Did the township ignore it and just reorganize anyway? And my final question appeared to the CAO report tonight is, why do Willment citizens have to invest another $100,000 to repeat a process that the township last conducted in 2022 that there should be report proof? I'd be interested if council chooses to discuss it tonight and get some questions through the CAO or senior staff. Myself and citizens would be attentive to that. Thank you. That's under seven minutes.
That was under seven minutes. Thank you very much, Barry. Any questions for our delegate, Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Thank you, Barry. I just wanted to state that that was a little bit different than the Service Delivery piece that we're presenting tonight, and I wanted to thank Director O'Kraftka for his work on this. And I also wanted to say that this was something that was brought up at our last budget meeting, at the town hall meeting. This was something brought up from a constituent. And I know that we had had complaints about our township perhaps not being as efficient, so I'm thrilled to see that this is moving forward. Glad to see the person who got the, that there were so many people applying, and that the person that got it has decades of experience with municipalities, so thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the delegate? Seeing none, any other comments or questions before we vote on this particular item? Again, it's to be received for information, and it's the Service Delivery Review Bid Process Update. Councillor Wilkinson?
Through the chair, I would just say that I share the same concerns as Mr. Wolf. However, I definitely view this particular project as being different than what was expected or not delivered or delivered in the past. And that is something that we should still definitely find out about. However, this is a much different scope in my interpretation. I'm looking maybe for some acknowledgement from the administrative team on that front, because this is meant to achieve a different outcome or a different goal altogether in terms of information.
Director O'Kraftka?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and Councillor Wilkinson. Yes, I think is the easiest answer on that. This process is different, will be different, and through reporting like this and upcoming engagement sessions will be much more transparent, I would expect.
Any other questions or comments before we vote on this for information? Okay, seeing none. I'll call the vote. All those in favor? That carries unanimously. And are there any committee members who want to remove any of the other consent agenda items? Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and I'd like to remove 10.5 encroachment bylaw.
And you may speak to that.
Through you, Mayor Salin, and thank you. In some ways, I have previously corresponded and spoken with Director Vanderwell. I have met with one farmer in particular. There were some concerns about the encroachment bylaw, such as what happens if there is growth in the ditch and it then grows over hydro, electricity line, telephone line, et cetera. Will the farmer, if Anova comes out, the Ontario Hydro and/or the township does trimming, will the invoice for that work be then given to the farmer? Especially if there are plants, trees that are on the farmer's property? So there were some questions about this. It's my understanding, Director Vanderwell, that you had looked into it, and when you and I talked about it, I understood that the intention was not to penalize landowners with this encroachment bylaw. And as I looked at it, it seems like a good bylaw. But I just wanted to at least raise for the public record that there have been some questions about that, and wonder if Director Vanderwell, you'd be able to speak to that question.
Through the, Mayor. Your interpretation of our previous discussion is correct. This is not intended to limit natural growth or anything that would come into the right-of-way from what's already approved on private property. It is more intended to restrict major installations, planting of trees, et cetera, within the right-of-way, anything that would impede our ability to maintain the right-of-way. So it is not meant to penalize a homeowner if they've got a forest that is adjacent to the right-of-way and it naturally extends. No, the intent of the bylaw is not to address any of those things that is still our maintenance to deal with.
Councillor Martin?
Just as a follow-up to that, through you, Mayor Salin, and thank you, Director Vanderwell. I guess then another part to that question is, in speaking with this one landowner, he said he himself would be willing to do some of the work if it's possible to do it, depending on what the ditch is like, or depending on what the right-of-way is like. And he thought that there would be other landowners or farmers who would also be willing to do that work, but sometimes, depending on the slope or the grading, it can be difficult. Is there a way that we can encourage cooperation between the township and landowners? And I don't feel like I would know how to speak to that issue, but I'm just wondering, again, since we're discussing the encroachment bylaw, if there's ways of enhancing cooperation on this.
So again, through the mayor, it is a more difficult question to answer, because part of me wants to say we do not want to encourage other people doing work on our right-of-way, but in the same sense, regular maintenance, landscaping, trimming of trees, that's already permitted within there. There would be nothing preventing us from it, and we are not looking to penalize anyone for maintaining it. If it is a more substantial works, we would request that we get the information so that we can do it, so that we do not have any liability issues that would be associated with it. But if you're talking about trimming a little bit of trees, cutting the grass, minor work like that, we would not be looking to penalize anyone for doing that.
Any other questions on 10.5, councillors? Councillor Cressman?
Yes, through you, Mayor, to Director Vander. I was thinking more of the tendency of farmers to farm every inch of land that's available, and if it's nice and level, they tend to plant corn into the ditches to get that extra few rows. So as long as it isn't impeding visibility, then I would assume there's no problem there. I think one of the comments came up in the comments on this encroachment bylaw, related to planting of crops into the township right-of-way. So is it frowned on, or is it acceptable? Or what's the response?
Again, the intent of this bylaw is not to go out and penalize farmers for farming. Depending on the situation, there may be utilities in certain areas that we would then have a discussion with the farmer to say, right, you may not need to be farming there. But this is not a bylaw where we are seeking to actively police what is happening. It is to enable us to maintain the right-of-way. So I would say in the situation you provided, we would not be looking at going out, talking to the farmer, dealing with it at all, because it is not impeding our ability to maintain the right-of-way.
Any other questions or comments on 10.5? Okay, seeing none. Are there any other consent agenda items that councillors wanted to remove? Councillors Sedu?
Thank you. I'd like to pull 10.7, the sidewalk policy.
And you're welcome to speak to it.
Thank you. This is a question for Mr. Vanderwell. I realize this might be a little hard to answer, but I see in the report here, we estimate it'll take 50 to 100 years to meet AODA standards if we go the current path we're going right now. My question is, if we do start to, we accept this policy as anything over five panels, that we're going to move to the 1.5 meter, how much is that going to shorten the timeline? And I'll start with that, and then I have another question after that here.
Through the mayor, I guess you started with the hardest question first, but admittedly, it's hard to say how much it will shorten the timeline. I would say we are at about 8% of the sidewalks being AODA compliant based on width alone. I can assure you that we would get well above that much quicker. It would come to, if this policy passed, I think in part of it, we said we'd put a plan together to look at how it goes. The reason it is a hard one to answer is because I can't tell you where the sidewalks are failing, and we are still addressing it based on where the sidewalks are failing. But we are then looking at that opportunity to improve the sidewalks we've got when they fail. I'm sorry, I can't give you a timeframe on how many years it would improve it, but based on the current rate, we're not moving anywhere, so.
Councillor Sedu?
I guess this is just a comment on my, for my logic and thinking of this, that essentially, so all of our existing sidewalks, other than new subdivisions, are 1.2, that replacing even five, six panels at a time, if they are together at 1.5, I'm just thinking about it as far as if you are someone with a disability, traveling our sidewalks, 95% of them are going to be 1.2 for the existing, you'll have a small gap that's 1.5, sure, you get relief there, but then you're going to go right back to something that's 1.2. In my mind, I just, I have a hard time wrapping my head around it. I would like to see something of the sorts of anything that needs to be repaired, we repair it with the existing size of 1.2. However, obviously, any new builds would be 1.5. If we need to rip up a street to do construction or anything, for example, Schneider's Road with all the construction going on, we have large stretches of street, then yes, replace it with a 1.5-meter sidewalks. But obviously, this is, in my mind, it's not just aesthetically, obviously aesthetics take aside to AODA standards, but I see that the current AODA standards have replacements exempt, so we're not going to be in contradiction of that act. I'm curious to see what my fellow councillors think of that, but I just think having something more clear of any replacements would go back to existing size, and any new builds or any large stretches that we're doing, as far as if we're ripping up a road, then go that way.
Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and thank you, Councillors Sedu, for your comments, and I think you make some good points that we should be considering. You know, I looked at this report as well and wasn't really sure what to propose. Could we ask for, I appreciate, and maybe this is a question then to you, Director Vanderwell, I appreciate your work on this report. Would it be possible to ask you to come back with more information on what we could do better to improve our sidewalks with regards to the AODA? Because I think anything we can do to improve the sidewalks, make it more accessible, is important.
Through the mayor, I stand corrected. I think I was just asked a more difficult question. We can come back with something. The reason we brought this policy forward as it was is because it doesn't, or it is not intended to impact the current budget. If I am understanding what you're asking correctly, we would then be looking for a budget line item to start upgrading the sidewalks. Some of them are less than 1.2, some of them are 0.9. We were not looking at bringing it that way based on the financial considerations of the township. However, if council wishes us to look into that, we can definitely look into that aspect. And to the previous, you are correct, we can continue replacing like-for-like. That is an option we've got. Other municipalities do segment some out where there are patches, and I understand what's being said, but this was brought forward in recognition of trying to better use existing budgets that we've got.
Councillor Wilkinson?
Thank you. Through the chair. I think, I mean, at least in my interpretation, there's a lot to discuss here, and maybe getting more information back on this isn't a bad idea. But I think where I maybe come up to some resistance to this policy is just simply that you could be left with big chunks that have larger sidewalks and then smaller sidewalk for a long time, and then larger sidewalk again. And I agree, I mean, aesthetics, it is important to some folks, specifically when it's in front of their house. So I think I would have concerns about some of those replacement options moving forward and just the way it looks. It would just seem very weird to have large, small, large, small for a long stretch, right? So part of me would be in favor of just do the like-for-like replacement. Whatever we built there, whatever we put there, that's what we maintain. And then obviously, moving forward, anything new, we attempt to really make sure that we're meeting the correct standards, and that's talking about new sidewalk in general. So that's my thought.
Any other discussion, questions, or comments on this item, councillors? I will weigh in my two cents. Some of the comments that I had have already been shared. And one big thing, I really appreciate your team trying to better utilize our budget. I think that's fantastic, to be looking for efficiencies. On a logistical point, and I know that my dad's going to be watching this today or tomorrow, so I'm going to call him out. He's in a power wheelchair and not the best driver. Having a few blocks that widen up actually can be more difficult and inaccessible, because then he can wind up in the ditch when it suddenly changes back and he doesn't have the mobility to change back into the path versus having a consistent path that's one size. I appreciate that as one anecdotal experience, but because of that, it certainly would make me a lot less inclined to support the replacement as proposed if five bays are wider, going with the wider amount. I guess I would be curious to know and possibly wonder if others, depending on how people want to potentially amend this, but I would be curious on, is there a way maybe to prioritize certain peak areas? So if it's, for example, on a main drag, and there's a bay of five to be replaced, and it's one of our downtown cores that has more foot traffic, perhaps looking at targeting those areas over in neighborhood replacements where there might not be as much foot traffic? I'm just throwing it out as an idea. I don't know what that would necessarily look like. Curious on others' thoughts. Because I do also agree striving towards AODA compliance is certainly important, and if it's something that we can do that's effective both for the users and the budget, that's something I do want to look at. I just think right now, as it is, I'm not quite convinced that it works for all the users of actually achieving the goal that we're trying to get to. So I will leave to if council wants to make amendments. If not, I will be looking to switch the chair to make amendments to this particular motion. Or of course, the other alternative is that we turn it down. However, I don't think that leaves staff with a better insight on what we would be looking for going forward. Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. I'd be interested in making an amendment that would just ask to have this report brought back to us during the budget period, and maybe with some recommendations on what would be helpful to add to our budget specifically with regards to sidewalks. I agree with Director Vanderwell's point that it needs to be actually added to the budget if we're serious about it. So I guess my proposal would be an amendment that says, could the Department of Infrastructure bring back during budget period a recommendation on sidewalk improvements, increasing the budget by an amount that seems beneficial over the next year or two years?
The only caveat I'd add to that is keeping in mind, the budget is not going to be the same process as it has been historically because of the new legislation. There isn't going to be a budget process during, I don't know how to word this, during the budget time, it's not going to be the same as in the past where we get to consider capital projects. That has to happen in advance. So I would just suggest to aim for what you're trying to get. It would, and it would obviously require, if it's even doable by your staff, it would be if they could bring back a report before the budget is tabled, so that it could then be considered to be added. But it can't be in the normal process that we're used to. So I just want to be clear on that part. But I would also look to... So I just want to be clear on that part, but I would also look to Director Van DeWolfe, if that's even something possible out of your team, for a realistic turnaround time. Or if that's maybe something we consider for the next budget and have you guys report back at another point.
All of the comments you made are feasible. The, the problem I've got at the current time is I'm not sure what to bring back to council. So it is very vague on what you want. Admittedly, if, if I've got more, if you doubled the budget, I could do all the sidewalks and do more, but that seems overly vague for what you're looking for. So if council could provide more direction, we would be able to provide something back to give you a timeframe on what it would be, we would be able to prioritize areas that need to be done, but at this point, we don't know whether or not we're looking at the new ones that are being requested, or whether or not we are looking at replacing areas where they're insufficient. So I would request a bit more information from council on what the actual request is.
If we could get this moved and seconded on the floor, because it's part of consent, it hasn't been moved and seconded yet, so moved by Counselor Wilkinson, seconded by Counselor Dunstall, I'll turn it over to Counselor Kressman for his comments.
Yes, I think, as I understand from our discussion, there's a general consensus at this point in time that you replace like with like unless the entire block is going to be replaced at the new standard. And if that was the direction that we gave, give to Director Van DeWolfe, I think it gives us the type of, I think, output that we all seem to be agreeing is needed. So if that is, I would move that as a resolution.
Okay, I just want to confirm, because Counselor Martin, you had brought about the idea of bringing forward an amendment, so I don't want to forget that and let somebody else go first. Did you, you're fine with that one being brought forward? Okay, so moved by Counselor Kressman, seconded by Counselors Sedu. I just want to clarify, does that provide enough direction on your end, Director?
I believe that does provide enough direction to modify this. Thank you.
So that's been moved and seconded. Any other comments to the amendment? Counselor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. So if I could, maybe you've already answered this then, Director Van DeWolfe, are you looking for a specific amount of money that you would like to have added to the budget? Or does the like-for-like and the, because I, I got confused, I wasn't, at first I was thinking we need to recommend a specific amount of money then, but maybe that's not what's needed.
Through the mayor, if I understand correctly, if I'm doing like-for-like, the new sidewalks will come as part of reconstruction projects, there is no new budget item that we are asking for at this time to start bringing our existing sidewalks up to AODA compliance, other than if we are doing a reconstruction activity. That is my understanding at this time.
Any other questions or comments on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the amendment, that's carried unanimously, and then all of those in favor of the motion as amended, and that also carries unanimously. That one was a real shocker. Any other consent agenda items that counselors would like to have removed? Okay, seeing none. Oh, sorry, Counselor Kressman?
The, the one I wanted to pull was the Hayesville Road.
10.6?
Yes.
You can speak to that.
10.6. Through you, Mayor, I guess Director Van DeWolfe and I commented earlier, do we have the authority if we find there's need to upgrade in a condominium development, do we have the authority as a township to request that the work be done? Or if they say, well, the work cost is going to cost us more than just paying the extra water, we'll live with it? Do we have any stick to make, or do we have any, I better not use the word stick, do we have any ability to make them address the deficiencies?
Through the mayor, admittedly, I'm not sure, and I think I would be looking to our chief building official or director of development to answer that one, as it's on private property. I don't know what ability we would have, it would not be through infrastructure services, it would be through the building code or somewhere there.
Through you, Mayor Salin, I, I believe it probably would be within the condominium declaration. I haven't memorized that one, so I don't have the specifics for you, but we would be able to get back to you with an answer on, on the provisions of that declaration and the condominium agreement.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on 10.6? Seeing none, any other consent agenda items that counselors would like to speak to? Okay, seeing none, I would look for a mover and a seconder to move item 10.2 through to 10.6 and 10.8 on the consent agenda item. Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Wilkinson. All those in favor, that carries unanimously. Now on to the reports, although it feels like we've had a head start. The first report is for the council meeting schedule to be received for information and to be approved as attached. This is for the 2026 council meeting schedule, so if I could have a mover for that? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Sedu. And I will invite our manager of legislative services and clerk, Caitlin Boss, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. Presented to you this evening is the proposed 2026 council meeting schedule. Annually, council adopts a schedule of council meetings for the following year. Staff are recommending the continuation of the decision-making structure of the Committee of the Whole and regular council meetings, which was introduced in 2025. You will see that there are a couple items of note on the 2026 schedule, including the municipal election and key dates, such as the nomination period, Election Day, and the inaugural meeting. These are included for your information, and we will note that they, as per our procedural bylaw, there are no scheduled meetings in September and October. This was adopted in the procedural bylaw, and staff will address any operational concerns in the restricted acts or lame duck period bylaw, or by scheduling special council meetings during those months. Also included as a special council meeting on May 11th is a statutory public meeting for our official plan review as required by the Planning Act. I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Are there any comments or questions on this, counselors? I do have a question myself, and it's just on the continuation of the Committee of the Whole. Is there a point in which it's going to be reviewed? I appreciate we haven't done it for a full year yet. I'm just wondering, will there be a point in which a comprehensive review is brought back to consider?
Thank you, Mayor Salin. I believe when we adopted the procedural bylaw amendments last year, I did verbally commit to bringing back some statistics and a fulsome review of it. I would say, I would aim for that in Q1 of 2026, when we've, when we finished our first full year of the structure.
Very good, thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. Onto 11.2, and that is that Report COR-2025-46 mayoral direction of 2025-01, council remuneration review be received for information, and that council directs staff to bring back a council remuneration review policy to the November Committee of the Whole meeting. May I have a mover for this? Moved by Counselor Sedu, seconded by Counselor Dunstall, and I will turn it back over to our manager of legislative services and clerk, Ms. Boston.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. Report COR-2025-46 was prepared in response to mayoral direction 2025-01. The report provides an overview of council remuneration, including current base salary levels and comparative data from two comparator groups. As per the mayoral direction, there is information on transitioning of the mayor's position from part-time to full-time, and included are some models for determining appropriateness of that change and appropriate compensation, should that be considered. The report recommends establishing a formal policy for regular remuneration reviews each term of council, incorporating public engagement and a full assessment of compensation components beyond just base salary. At this time, the report is for information purposes, and any proposed changes to council remuneration would be included in the proposed 2026 budget. I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor, to, I guess it's to you, Mayor, because you're the one that made the, the, or gave the direction for this. What's your rationale for full-time, Mayor? Because we don't see that in, other than large cities, and none of our rural townships have it, so I'm just trying to get a, a sense of the rationale.
Absolutely. Thank you. So I guess back up a little bit, on the direction component, so this originally came from, oftentimes in municipalities, there is an annual review, the budget year leading into the next council. We did not have a process, so in discussion with the clerk, she asked if I could provide direction so that we could then get a process going, and she wasn't just arbitrarily bringing up information that hadn't been requested. So that's where that direction and request came from, on wanting to get into a process as well as get a formalized policy before council to consider. So any changes that council may consider in the budget would not be happening for this council, I want to make clear to the general public. In terms of your actual question that you asked about full-time, Mayor, is a few things. One aspect, I do work on the AMO Healthy Democracy Advisory Board, and on that, we discuss ideas and concepts, and we're really trying to find a way to engage more and diverse people to enter into the political realm, in particular in municipal politics and run. And a lot of the body of research that is coming forward is that one of the barriers is compensation when it comes to these positions, and so that there are people who are interested in these roles, but due to financial reasons, the commitment from a time perspective doesn't always work out that they're able to hold these positions even though they might bring value to the roles. So that's one thing that I've certainly taken note of. Also, having been in this role and the public expectation as well as the actual amount of hours versus the compensation, although I'm very grateful for the position that I ran for, it doesn't really balance out very well, so I'm really passionate about how can we incentivize, not just through compensation, but finding multiple ways to get good people in our community to run for these positions and for people to acknowledge the work that goes into these roles. I'm still not fully convinced or persuaded that that's the route that we're going to go, but I did want that to be included in the review, and I do recognize that right now, that's not something that we see in smaller municipalities, but we are also at a time where we're seeing acclamations being a lot more commonplace, unfortunately, although I think the strong mayor powers might change that. And with that caveat too, I think with the strong mayor's powers, there's a lot of additional responsibility in theory put on the mayor. We know the, I guess, strong mayors isn't something that everyone agrees with, however, it is something that has been legislated, and so things like the budget in theory are the responsibility of an individual, and I think getting people who have experience and valuable things to bring to the table, being able to have these positions is important, and compensation, and compensation is one of those, and it sounds like Siri's over there listening. But that was just my justification for wanting this information brought forward. Again, this is for information at this point, and I do want it to be a council decision as to how we choose to proceed. I hope that's wholesome of answering your question. I think I went on a bit of a rant, but any other comments or questions on this information at this time? Okay, seeing none. Again, this is to receive for information and then bring back a remuneration review policy for November Committee of the Whole, so I would, we already have a mover and a second, correct? Yes. I'll call the vote, all those in favor, and that carries unanimously. And on to 11.3, this is the affiliation policy in minor sports discounts. Counselor Martin has noted his conflict pertaining to the New Hamburg Firebirds, so we will particularly separate out the vote of all the groups except for the Firebirds first, and then we will complete the second vote just on the Firebirds so that Counselor Martin is not in conflict. So the first recommendation is that the report CS-2025-12 affiliation policy in minor sports discounts be received for information, that council approve the revised community services affiliation policy as attached in the report, and that staff be directed to continue the current facility use subsidies, minor sports discount, which is 35%, and in-kind staff costs for legacy facility bookings by affiliated groups and special events. This is excluding the Firebirds at the moment, all taking place within township facilities in the 2026 year. May I have a mover for that? Moved by Counselor Kressman, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Any, I'm going off script here, I'm going to turn it over to Director Catania to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. The township has a strong history of supporting community groups, service clubs, sporting associations, and special event organizers in their efforts to provide recreation, leisure, and special events to the community. Without adequate levels of township support for these groups, there would be fewer opportunities for residents of the township to engage in activities with friends, neighbors, and visitors to the community. Staff are seeking approval of the revised affiliation policy and same levels of discounted use and in-kind support for both special events and affiliated use in 2026. This report provides a summary of the subsidized and discounted use of township facilities and in-kind staffing resources for special events and facility use by affiliated groups for the period of September 1st, 2024 through to August 31st, 2025. This information is normally reported on an annual basis for the period of January to December. However, staff felt it would be prudent to present this information ahead of the budget process and in line with council's resolution on a review of current subsidies with the five-year reduction plan. Through stakeholder engagement and evaluating municipal comparators, staff always are seeking opportunities to improve efficiencies and potential cost recovery opportunities. Through the revised affiliation policies, or sorry, through the revised affiliation policy, improvements are being made to include increasing the residency rate so that you're applicable to be part of an affiliated group. Sports discounts apply only to youth-based activities. Affiliate group discounts applicable only to the organization, not by an individual or a team, and any events or banquetts that are held only to be confined to community centers or parks. The current minor sport discount is set at 35% off prime time rental hour rates. In the report, staff have provided municipal comparisons with ICE usage, as this trend is the biggest revenue driver for municipal facility recreation. Staff have also consulted with users and did an analysis with neighboring municipalities. In conclusion, staff feel that the sport rate for minor groups is within the municipal average for the region and would be the highest if subsidies were consecutively reduced yearly over the next five years. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you very much, Director Catania. Questions, counselors? Counselor Kressman?
Yes, I compliment, through you, Mayor, I compliment you on an excellent written report with lots of detail. You can understand the background pieces of information, and yes, I see the impact, and I would be concerned about the impact on minor sports and affiliated groups if we went through, although it's very enticing to look at a 5% discount annually, I would be concerned of the unintended consequence of doing that, and I think if we can keep our youth engaged, maybe we would see less paper plates around our gazebo on a daily basis. Sorry, that's just a thing that bugs me every time I come here.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Just to, just to add to that, I mean, I know that physical activity, you know, contributes to mental health, social skills, leadership skills, teamwork, self-confidence, so I'm in agreement with Counselor Kressman there.
Any other comments or questions? Counselor Wilkinson, are you thinking about, you're good? Okay. Um, we do have a virtual delegate on this item tonight, so I will invite Christina Arsno to address the committee. Christina, thank you for joining us, and you will have seven minutes once we get the tech side working.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I don't see an option to put on my camera, um, so sorry about that, but, um, I can, uh, do this via audio, and that's completely workable too. So, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Um, my name is Krista Arsno, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the Volunteer Board for the Wilmot Aquatic Aces Swim Team, and I'll refer to them as WAC. Thank you for the opportunity to address you on this important matter of the affiliation policy and minor sports discounts. I'd like to thank Chris Katania and his team for their thorough review of the policy and the engagement efforts that were undertaken as part of this review. WAC is a longstanding, not-for-profit, community sport organization run by a board of volunteers. Our team is deeply rooted in Wilmot, serving children and youth from across the township, while also welcoming swimmers from surrounding areas. We began swimming in New Hamburg at the Wilmot Community, uh, and moved to the Wilmot Recreational Complex in 2012. We are proud to say that many of our athletes go on to become lifeguards and swim instructors at the Wilmot Recreational Complex, further supporting recreational services for our community. We are here tonight because of the proposed phased reduction of the minor sport discount subsidy. While we understand the fiscal pressures facing the township, we need to share with you the real impacts this proposal would have, not only on our club, but on Wilmot families and the broader community. First, pool rental is one of the largest expenses of our club. WAC already fundraises 20% of our annual revenue just to remain viable, despite our swim fees being at or above the level of surrounding clubs. If this subsidy is reduced, we will be forced to either raise those fees further or increase fundraising demands. Either option digs deeper into the pockets of Wilmot Aces families. Reducing affordability creates barriers to access. Families may choose to leave our program or lower crust options elsewhere, which could shrink our numbers and weaken the strength, strong community we have built. This undermines both youth sport participation and the development of skilled aquatic staff for the township. Access to aquatic programming is not only a matter of sport, but of public safety and community health. The Aquatic Sport Council of Ontario's recent 2025 report highlighted how limited access to pools across a province reduces opportunities for children to learn to swim, contributes to higher rates of drowning, and increases long-term strain on our healthcare system. In 2020 alone, Ontario saw over 200 drowning deaths, the highest in a decade, underscoring the importance of early, consistent access to swim programs. By maintaining affordability access to our swim club, Wilmot is doing its part to ensure that young people learn lifesaving, swimming skills, build lifelong healthy habits, and reduce preventable tragedies. This is bigger than sport. It's about protecting our kids and strengthening our community. WAC makes meaningful contributions to the township's financial health. We purchase large amounts of off-peak pool time, weekday mornings, early afternoons, and early Saturday morning slots that would otherwise be difficult to fill. We also bring hundreds of visitors to Wilmot through our hosted swim meets, generating community exposure and local economic impact. To suggest that this subsidy is a net loss to the township overlooks this reality. Our presence is a net revenue generator, not a liability. Beyond the pool, WAC contributes to the vibrancy of Wilmot in other ways. Each year, we host three to four community dances for students in grade five through to grade eight. These events are always sold out and provide middle-school age kids with an affordable, safe, and chaperoned opportunity to socialize. With cuts to education funding and schools no longer hosting dances as they once did, our team of volunteers has stepped up to fill in this gap. If the Aces disappear, so too do these dances and the group of dedicated community volunteers who make them possible. Council, this decision is about more than numbers on a bounce sheet. It's about the accessibility of sport for children, the health of our community, and the sustainability of a program that has served Wilmot families for decades. Reducing this subsidy threatens the very existence of Wilmot Aquatic Aces and the opportunities that we provide to our youth. On behalf of our board of volunteers, our families, our swimmers, we urge you to reconsider this proposal. Maintaining the current minor sports subsidy agreement is not just an investment in sport, it's an investment in our community's future. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much, Krista, for joining us tonight and for sharing that on behalf of, uh, the Aces Club. Councilors, are there any questions for our delegate? Okay. Seeing none, thank you again for joining us. Um, are there any other comments or questions on what's before us right now? Counselor Martin? Actually, sorry, you have your conflict right now, I just realized.
I thought we were separating in the Firebirds.
My apologies. Nope, yep, you're right. Sorry, carry on.
Uh, through you, Mayor Salin. Um, I, I apologize for, uh, being somewhat, um, confused on, on this. So, when I read this, uh, recommendation that if we approved this policy, we would not be supporting the 5% reduction every year. Do I understand that correctly, uh, Director Katia?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Counselor Martin, that is correct. So, based on the notice of, or a council resolution back in January, staff were directed to look at reducing, like, the direction was to reduce it by 5% each year, starting in 2026. With our consultation and municipal comparators, with the engagement that we provided, we came back with a recommendation this evening to, to, um, recommend the same 35% discount and leave it the way it is.
Counselor Martin?
So then, thank you, uh, Mayor Salin and Director Katania. I, I, um, then got confused by our delegate because our delegate is asking us to reconsider this proposal, and I wonder if there's some confusion about that. Uh, so I just wanted to clarify, say it out loud, um, to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Very good. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Kressman?
So, through you, Mayor, to add to the confusion, uh, I guess, my point is, this is to be received for information, and the decision is to be made the end of the month, is that correct? Thank you.
Yes, that is correct. Um, so this would just be committee of the whole approving for us then, as the same body of people to reconsider again at the end of the month. Um, Counselor Wilkinson?
Thank you, through the chair. Um, I, I think initially, when, when this policy or the, the ask was put forward, you know, or it was done so during our budget time, and, and we were looking at ways of reducing costs, uh, or, or maintaining or, um, generating revenue. So, I mean, looking at it, you know, through those lenses, it, it sort of made sense to maybe look at cutting subsidy, but looking at comparators and looking at where, um, it would leave some of these organizations, I, I can certainly appreciate how difficult it would be. I think maybe as a tool for us on the table in the future, uh, you know, a one-time adjustment if we, we need to maybe fine tune things of, maybe 5% is something we consider down the road, but, um, I do appreciate the work that's been put in here, and then listening to the community feedback, it, it's pretty overwhelming that this is obviously not desired. Um, I still know that there are other members of the community that would feel differently. For instance, um, parents who have their children in, um, oh, pardon me, I'm fighting off a sneeze. Uh, um, for instance, dancers or cheerleaders who don't have access to these facilities but rather have to go through a private facility, um, don't benefit from the same subsidy. And there are certainly members of the community who do not, uh, use these services at all and are having to then subsidize it, right? And I can understand where their concern would be, we would want the users of the facilities to be paying for it. So, I see it a few different ways, but, um, I think overwhelmingly, I'm, I'm in favor of, we can maintain our, our existing policy, and this information is very valuable. But, well, uh, if anybody in my ward should feel different, please reach out, I'd love to discuss.
Any other questions or comments, councilors? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Uh, the second part should be a bit quicker. This is nail the conflict that Counselor Martin has, so, um, exact same policy, just specifically regarding the New Hamburg Firebirds. If I could get a mover and a second, or moved by Counselor Kressman, seconded by Counselor Dunstall. Um, as it is the same report, I am not going to ask Director Katania to tell us about it again. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, that also carries unanimously. On to report 11.4, and this is assessment of community buildings and land, and the recommendation is that this report be received for information. To get it on the floor, may I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Dunstall, seconded by Counselor Sudu. And I will invite our Director of Community Services back, Director Katania, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. I'd like to, um, just before introducing the report, I'd like to just acknowledge the, uh, the team members in our department that actually helped really put this together. There was a lot of detail involved with it. Uh, staff have prepared information detailing cost-benefit analysis, third-party real estate analysis, facility utilization, and community engagement for the settlement, community buildings and land. Not taken into consideration for this study are administration or government facilities such as libraries or this baiting administrative office, the Parks Fire Administration Center, or the Public Works Facility that's on Sand Hills Road. Furthermore, the Wilmot Recreation Complex has also been omitted from the study due to the multipurpose use, the volume of programming, and the revenue that it generates. The satellite community facilities include comprehensive data sheets attached to the report. The report is provided for information to council. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you very much. Uh, we'll go to Counselor Kressman for questions.
Yes, uh, through you, Mayor, to Director Katania. I guess, the only piece that I, you know, might question, and not that I'm, you know, um, uh, contending with the, um, real estate value of a piece of property, is if you have to tear down a building, there's demolition costs. And I know when I have to buy insurance for a farm building, uh, that's one of the things they say, if there's a fire, you also have to clean up the site, and with cleaning up a site, there's a cost, and you have to have that included in your, um, insurance. And so, somehow, I'm wondering about that piece in this, whether that is taken to account when you look at the relative real estate value of some of these sites.
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Counselor Kressman. Uh, the real estate values that we have were done by a third-party appraiser, uh, in, in real estate, and as well, it would just be property building as-is at this point, so does not take into consideration any other additional fees.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. I have a motion that's coming up to deal with this. Do I, can I bring it now, or should I just wait?
Um, so we do still need to dispense with this particular report, but I do have a note that, uh, because it ties in, we can move it up, which I was happy to do so, but we'll need to dispense with this first.
Great, okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions on receiving this for information at this time? Counselor Stu?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Um, I was reading through this, and I would, uh, thank you for the report. I think it breaks down the bricks and mortar value of these, uh, these buildings. Um, I just, I would caution that, um, there's more to than just the value of these buildings. There's a social aspect of, uh, the community and using these, uh, these venues, so I caution looking at it just as a band-aid, not a band-aid solution, but a short-term fix to our financial burden. These are long-term assets that we need to really seriously think about it if it is worth selling now. Um, just doing the quick math here, even if we were to sell a building or two, it's not going to fix our financial situation. It's, it might even just slightly be above helping the current financial situation, but then you, you lose an asset that you can really rely on in the future, and having these buildings, I don't think you can really put a price tag on the community aspect of it, of the benefits to the community, and just simply saying, "Well, we can relocate and people can go somewhere else." There's, it's easier said than done, so I would just caution that, but, uh, I do appreciate the report and having an idea of the values of our buildings currently.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Counselor Martin?
Uh, through you, Mayor Salin. I, I simply wanted to thank Director Katania and the other people involved in this report. It, it's a very significant report, gives us a lot of helpful information. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Again, this is for information. Counselor Kressman?
Yes, um, uh, through you, Mayor. There's significant difference in capital cost requirement over the next 10 years, and I guess I've always looked at the assets that I have to operate with, and you look at the assets that we will require little capital cost to keep them in good shape, and the ones that are staring you in the face is saying they're going to be a big, uh, cost, and often after you, you pay the, the, um, cost of upgrading them, you, you know, especially tractors and other things, and you do a transmission or you do a motor, and then you said, "Could have, should have, wish, would have got rid of that and, and replaced it because it just, uh, something else went wrong." And so, I guess I look at this, and I know it's not a perfect art, but I certainly would see as we contemplate the next, uh, resolution, that future capital costs would weigh very heavily in my decision as well, in terms of looking at some of these and saying if they have, are in good shape, requiring little, are in repair and maintenance, then I would think they would be something, and are serving a purpose, and, um, then, uh, you know, then I would think they would, uh, kind of, uh, rise to the top like cream. That's just an observation.
Very good. Director Katania?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and Counselor Kressman. Uh, no, it's an interesting point, and I know that there will be another motion that's going to be tabled, and something that staff definitely can, uh, evaluate when you think about what is the amount of investment in that value? How do you place that value on, you know, how much do you really want to sink in? I will, the reason why I wanted to comment on this was, the requirements that we have in our 10-year capital right now for these facilities are really base bones. It, it doesn't take into consideration the potential for the aesthetics, the finer finishes, maybe modernizing some of these facilities. These are, these are requirements in the 10-year capital that would address whether it's roofing or mechanical units, uh, could be certain structural things, windows, just basic items you would need to keep up on a facility, no different than keeping up on your home.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, again, this is to receive for information. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. And, uh, as noted by Counselor Dunstall, she does have a motion that's adjacent to, um, this report that we just approved for information, so I will pull up item 12.2, which is Counselor Dunstall's Notice of Motion Regarding the Evaluation Matrix of Township Buildings and Lands at this time, and I'll turn it over to Counselor Dunstall to introduce.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to forego the whereas's and the therefor's, um, and so this motion establishes a standardized point-based evaluation process for all township-owned buildings and lands. Staff are directed to assess each asset using the following criteria: financial, utilization, community, condition, future potential, and market value. From this, the lowest-scoring sites will be identified with recommendations on whether they should be sold or leased long-term. Staff will also report on potential program relocations and return their findings to council on December 22nd, 2025.
Thank you very much. Is there a second to get this motion on the floor? Seconded by Counselor Wilkinson, and I will open it up for discussion. Counselor Wilkinson, did you want to, sorry, Counselor Dunstall, did you have more you wanted to add to it? Okay, we'll go to Counselor Dunstall, then to Counselor Wilkinson.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Last year, I said everything needed to be on the table, which was why I asked for the building assessment report, which was brought in tonight. We're already walking into this budget process carrying a 9% tax levy, and we haven't even begun to look at the 2026 needs. We need to start looking for alternative solutions. The reality is that Wilmot has three times more municipal facilities per capita than comparable municipalities. Of the seven sites in the report, four are barely breaking even and three are running at a loss, with more than over $2 million in capital needs just to bring it up to par, projected over the next decade. We cannot avoid decisive action on the future of these buildings. The proposed grid ensures our decisions are based on data rather than sentiment, and I know how important these are to the community. They hold personal and community They hold personal and community value, but we must balance those attachments with fairness and the need for tax relief for all of our constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Wilkinson as the seconder, and then we'll continue.
Through the chair, thank you. I, I'm torn on this. I mean, I will share that I am in favor of going through the exercise and, and coming up with potential plans and, and understanding where things could potentially go. And alternatively, on the flip side, I also can appreciate that there are a lot of these communities that are built using donated money or donated time in the local area where they, they serve. And, and I know that there would be residents, certainly that would be upset should any of these facilities disappear in their, their local area. And I would even go so far as to suggest that there's probably other areas of the town that are looking for facilities to be brought in. So I'm interested in at least having the conversation and maybe going through the exercise, but I, I am in no way in favor of disposing of any of our assets, just as sort of a general thought right now.
Thank you very much. We'll go to Councillor Kressman?
Yes, I initially thought, well, this would provide some information that would be useful, and then I got, through you, Mayor, sorry. I got my thinking cap on, which I do sometimes, and I was looking at, how do you, how do you put points on different aspects? How do you weigh one aspect versus another aspect that you're going to be evaluating? Does this one aspect get two points, and this other one get one point? Does this one get three points? You know, and so as you look at this, you, you could have a very complex point system, or you, if you give everything you want to measure one point, is that going to be adequate? So I'm just looking at this and saying, although I, I think, I'm always looking for good, useful information to make decisions, because I think that's what decisions are, good decisions are based on, I'm wondering if it's going to be leading us in a direction, in some cases, that are, that would not, would reflect the points that were assessed to each individual component at the start, and it is, you know, would we need an AI algorithm to get this done right? So I'm just, if we tasked our staff with this, can they do a totally, you know, if, so I guess, all to say, to Director Katania, if this passes, would you be able to do a, what you would consider an adequate job to, to do the complete evaluation?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Councillor Kressman. We would definitely work towards making sure that there's a fair process, no different than an RFP process, where there's an evaluation matrix based on specific criteria you have with this motion here. You have a list that we can attach a certain percentage to that would equal 100. I think where the, the process still will be slightly subjective, because you would have different opinions, different thought process, when you have a multiple, like we, if, again, if it passes, this would be something that would be a collaborative effort with multiple staffers, and maybe potentially even different departments to give an unbiased lens, to try to attribute a certain point structure to, whether it's capital costs that you have to put into these facilities over the next 10 years, to the usage of prime time hours, as well as even just with, you know, even where their location is geographically. I mean, there's just a lot that would factor in. So before we, we would start this, we would have to definitely make sure that we have a signed and sealed proper evaluation matrix. And then from there, we would proceed with an evaluation, come back to council later in the year, and let council be able to, to evaluate, or at least just to see the results that we've put in. It, it's challenging, but it's still definitely doable. Something that we saw, we can also look at certain research with other, potential other communities, and see what they've done with, with, with any excess or any facilities that they've had to have disposed of. So we will, we'll take that into consideration, and we'll do our best to come back in December with a proper evaluation.
Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. First of all, thank you to Councillor Dunstall for bringing forward this motion. I, I think it is creative, and yes, I, I think we do need to look at creative solutions to help us with our, our budget and to keep taxes as low as possible. I, I have a question, and that would be, I, I'm not sure, maybe it's to you, Clerk Boss, if we approve this tonight, it would still come back to the end of September council meeting?
Through you, Mayor Salin. As this isn't a decision point, and it's directions to staff to report back, it would not go through the council cycle, unless this was something that you wanted to review in four weeks from now before voting on it. So the committee can give direction. If you would like to postpone the consideration of this motion to the council meeting, should you want to reach out to constituents or get more information on it, that would be a motion to postpone the decision.
Thank you. Can I continue then? So then, another part of it is also thinking that, that we, we did have assessment of community buildings and land, so that's seven buildings, but there would be other buildings that the township owns, and land that the township owns. So I'm not sure if we're including those in this process, so then I would be curious, or not more than curious, I, I guess I would wonder, then, if we're doing some kind of a point system, shouldn't we bring in all of the township- owned land and buildings? And, and then another part, part of that is, if, if we were really going to do that and develop some kind of a matrix, in my mind, three, it, it then is almost three months from now until December 22nd, wondering if that's enough time, because it seems quite an extensive process, especially if we're doing some kind of comparator, you know, and it seems to me we'd have to compare with other municipalities if we're really looking at all of our land and buildings.
Director Katania?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to, to Councillor Martin. I think if the scope stays with what this original report that was tabled tonight, with the seven existing, I think we can manage to get this back for December. If we're looking at every piece of municipal property, I'd have to define what that scope is, because in community services, obviously, we're dealing with municipal facilities, but it's defining what municipal properties are, whether it's water, wastewater, and pumping stations, and that type of thing. So, yeah, you also have acreage of parks as well, so the will of council on exactly what you're defining as the assessment of certain properties and land at this point.
Councillor Stu?
Thank you. Yeah, just overall, still kind of on the fence of how to proceed it. I feel like this motion kind of straddles the line between evaluation and pre-planning for a sale. We're going to have a list and see who finishes at the bottom, essentially, but on the one hand, it is, I see the effectiveness of going through the exercise. As far as evaluating and putting a point system, I, sometimes I feel like that oversimplifies their actual value, just piggybacking off of what Councillor Kressman was saying, that how can you put certain values on the community? Just looking long-term, I feel like selling off community assets is a short-term gain, but what are the long-term ramifications? I know Councillor Dunstall has mentioned that per capita, we have more community centers based on our population, however, we also know our population will be growing in the future. So how are we going to have those assets and facilities for the more people that are coming into town? So these are just some of the thoughts that are going through my head of, I understand the exercise, and then I think, is it the best use of staff resources to go through this exercise if we're not going to actually go through with it, and if we don't have, like, we don't have the line of thinking of we want to sell the assets? So I'm still undecided, this is, just saying my thoughts out loud here.
Councillor Dunstall?
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. I just want to verify something with you, Director Katania. In your experience, is it typical process that when a large facility is built, like the WRC, and there are satellite smaller facilities, that they would typically be closed? Is that typically what happens when a large facility is, is, is built?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Councillor Dunstall. Through my experience, when, and this is all based on strategic plans, Parks and Recreation Master Plans, but yes, when you see brand-new, multipurpose recreation centers come online to serve, obviously, multipurpose faction, with meeting rooms, halls, ice, pool, that type of thing, they, they help eliminate the need for potential smaller, underutilized facilities. And from my experience, you know, with the planning process, not through Director Crafta, but just in, in the sense of a Parks and Rec Master Plan, they help supplement the growing population, but also alleviate kind of the, you know, the outdated or useful, the use that was some of the satellite facilities. So yes, they ended up becoming disposed of, and, you know, this way they redirect that usage or traffic to that multipurpose, one-stop-shop facility.
Thank you. And I just want to make comment, I think our constituents are demanding that we look at every single alternative that we have out there, so that we can give them some sort of relief, any kind of relief. So I think going through the exercise in December 22nd, when we get the results back, we can make that decision at that time, but I think it certainly is a worthwhile process. And thank you for the report, it was quite extensive.
Councillor Kressman?
Yes, I guess by that logic, then the New Hamburg Community Center in the arena should have been closed the minute this, the rec center was built. I, I believe what we're going to see is consolidation of everything in Baden and New Hamburg. That's the net result of what we're putting on the table here. And my mind is, communities have fundraised, they, there used to be park and recreation, I liked the background that was here, committees for these different parks, they took ownership, granted, volunteerism, volunteerism fell away. In some cases, new ball diamonds were here in New, are created in New Dundee, and the washrooms are in the, in the community center. So how do you separate, you know, put Johnny's on the spots by the ball diamonds? I don't, I don't know. Maybe I'm prejudging what I'm seeing here. But I guess I am concerned that what I hear, and my constituents, is everything gets built up in New Hamburg and Baden, and those communities that are on the fringes end up paying the price. And to be honest, with the new facility that's being built in Kitchener, on, between Huron and Plains Road, it's much, that offers many of the, and much more than what the rec center offers, and I would see the residents of Mannheim and New Dundee, if the facility was closed in New Dundee, likely migrating to there to provide the services that have been provided. So that's kind of my assessment of this from, from a level, I, I don't, I hope I don't sound like sour grapes, but that's kind of the, the summation of what I see.
Thank you. Not sour grapes, but no suggestions of annexing, is all I can say. But I guess I would just throw in my comments on this. I do appreciate that the information that we just received before was prompted by trying to look at different ways to reduce the tax levy. However, after reading that report, I was also thinking about fundamentally what are municipalities responsible for, and I think creating public spaces is something that the property tax base actually is, one of the few things it's actually designed to do. I think, although I can appreciate the exercise, Councillor Dunstall, that you want to go through, my understanding in speaking with staff and further understanding how they develop their budgets, you guys already kind of inadvertently review and decide and assess if we need to look at outdated or no longer investing in upgrades in facilities, and I don't think that we've quite reached that point. And I really would hate to see in our smaller communities where, just due to sheer population, they don't get utilized as much, but they do provide really important community public spaces. I think of the Hayesville location in particular. I know that Girl Guides runs out of there, they have the, we have the deal with the co-op daycare right there as well, and although on paper it might look underutilized, it is providing, I think, really critical community engagement, and kind of almost goes back to a bit of the subsidizing conversation we were having of some of our youth groups and sports-affiliated groups. I feel this is almost an extension of that, of creating spaces for other community groups to be able to do their work. So I guess my thing is, although I think the intent behind it is really good, I don't think I can support it at this time, in part of what investment staff would need to put into this to be effective, I don't know is the best use of their time, as well as I don't think I could actually come to parting with any of these assets that we currently have at the moment. So I appreciate the looking at different contexts, and I think it is our job to really sharpen our pencils, but for that reason, I won't be supporting this particular motion. Are there any other comments or questions at this time, though? Councillor Martin?
Through you, Mayor Salin. Since this is a committee of the whole, and we are discussing and possibly brainstorming, it's actually a building in New Hamburg that I, that I think maybe we could part with. And so in, in considering Councillor Kressman's comments, I agree, and, and also Mayor Salin, your comments, it's important that we consider all territories or regions of, of the township. The 121 Huron Street, and then if, in fact, we move the fire hall, you know, maybe there's some way of, of considering selling off an asset there that we wouldn't need, and I see that, that that's in New Hamburg, not elsewhere. But I don't know how we would address that particular issue. Is that something that we, I mean, in part, we have to wait for a while, I guess. So I, I guess maybe I'm simply saying something out loud that is part of what I'm thinking about for the future in, in terms of sales of asset.
Director Katania?
Through you, Mayor Salin, and to Councillor Martin, to, just to add to your comment or your question there, what we would normally do through an enterprising, like, facility-type of situation is, anytime with our team, we would look at new builds. So depending on how we proceed with new fire hall in New Hamburg, our team would obviously be looking at any additional properties. We have, obviously, 121 Huron would be one of them, and tabling that with council to indicate there's not a usage for it from a, potentially a municipal perspective, and an opportunity there to take a look at a plethora of different opportunities where we're not burdening the township with, with those costs. So we would definitely take that into advisement, and something that, you know, it's in the, it's in the forefront for us as a team to, to ensure anytime, anything new comes online, there's something else we can take offline if it's not servicing the community.
Any other comments at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will call the vote. All those in favor? And all those opposed? And that is defeated. We will go back to our regular report schedule, and 11.5 is our final report of the evening, and it is on the Canada Day Committee Report to be Received for Information, and that in accordance with Section 4.3.1 of the Committee Governance Policy, GP-23-01, the Wilmot Task Force be dissolved, and that council directs staff to work with local, or local organizations and community groups on planning, implementing, and executing an inclusive Canada Day celebration event, which normally consists of one focal event on July the 1st. To get this on the floor, may I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Martin, seconded by Councillors Sudu, and I will again invite our Director of Community Services- of Community Services, Chris Katania, to introduce this report.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. The Canada Day Event Task Force has played a pivotal role in the planning and delivery of the Canada Day celebrations for both 2024 and 2025. The dedication, hard work, and enthusiasm of the task force members has been instrumental in the success of this event, and staff would like to acknowledge and express appreciation for the significant contributions made by all members of the task force. This report outlines the successes of the past events, identifies opportunities for continued improvement, and presents a recommendation to transition the Canada Day event to a staff-led approach. Under this new approach, staff would work collaboratively and closely with local organizations and community groups to plan, coordinate, and deliver an inclusive and community-focused celebration. This recommendation is informed by the feedback from both task members and staff, highlighting the potential for improved coordination and streamlined processes. The staff-led approach will enhance operational efficiencies while maintaining strong community engagement and community support. Happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you very much. Director, councilors, any questions? Counselor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor, to Director Katania. I think there's other members of staff here tonight, but I seem to be asking a lot of questions of you. I was surprised in reading this report that there isn't flexibility in subcommittees to address items that aren't on the agenda. Usually, there's a section called Other Business, and people, I mean, I've chaired a number of meetings in the, in my past commodity life, and, you know, it didn't seem to be as rigidly defined as that, so I'm just trying to gain an appreciation of how that constrained the committee to the extent that it did. And I saw that in the report. Maybe I was wrong in reading that.
Well, Counselor Kressman, your earlier observation of there being other staff, I am actually going to direct that question to Clerk Boss, because it's very much a technical procedural point.
Thank you, Mayor Salin, and Counselor Kressman. I did want to provide one point of clarification. This is not a subcommittee of council that has been assigned one, it is a committee of council. So they do meet with notice provisions and quorum requirements. So when there is expenditures or decision to be made, very similar to agendas that we set for council, they are to provide notice to the public for open and transparent meetings and what's being discussed and decided upon. So when our staff may mention that something is not on an agenda item, or it hasn't been presented with the proper notice requirements, I believe that's what the report was referencing in slowing down being able to make decisions. So they do follow very similar meeting protocols, they have a code of conduct, they follow our procedural bylaws, so as a committee of council, they do inherit a very similar set of rules as we have around this horseshoe.
Director Katania?
Thank, thank you. I learn something every night.
Through you, Mayor Salin. I guess to add to some of my opening remarks, we're, our intention as a team here is, it's still a community-led event. We really need the support of our community groups and our volunteers to help the success of this, of this event for Canada Day. And right now, we have really a good event, well, we, we know what we're doing, not just staff but the volunteers, we've had a couple of years, we know the different successes, and staff can, with this type of process moving forward, to make it more efficient, we can start engaging with some of our vendors earlier, signing off on certain agreements so that we have these things in place, but we definitely rely on the community and the volunteers to help really run it, and specifically even the day of. So we're not really changing anything in that regard, we're just trying to make the process a little bit more efficient, try to make it even more efficient for staff so that they can still continue on with their core duties as well, and to make it a success for the rest of Wilmot.
Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Martin.
Through you, Mayor Salin. Thank you, Director Katania, for bringing the report, and also wanted to thank Manuela Ocrafta for writing the report. I believe she had a significant role in that. I recognize, having been involved the past two years, I recognize the hard work that staff have put in, so I would be in favor of this motion and would like to see us try this, especially for the next year, because if it would lessen the impact on staff, I think that would be a benefit. I do have a concern. I'm curious how the community fundraising will go this year. I think it was 18,000 that was brought in from the community, a significant amount of money, and so next year, we would see how that goes. I know last year, when I was on the fundraising committee, because of some of the considerations that our council was dealing with, I wasn't a good person to raise money for the event. It was other people, because I represented council, I wasn't a good fundraiser, and so other people were. And so I think this structure maybe takes that into account, and so I would be in favor and curious to see how it goes. I think we've had two great Canada, Canada Day, the past two years, the Canada Days have been great, and I'd like to see it continue.
Counselor Dunstall?
Thank you through you, Mayor. I concur with my colleague here, and I did want to mention, staff did a fantastic job, our volunteers did, the committee did, but I also did want to mention, Abby Stevenson and Susan Hammer, they got that money, man, and they weren't leaving until they did, so great job for everyone. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this, council? Not seeing any, I just want to also add on, I will also be supporting this, and I think it's with great input from both the staff side and from the community side, and, yes, to be very clear, this is not ending the Canada Day events as we know it, it's just making it logistically, I think, a lot easier to manage on the backend for planning. So thank you to staff, both for writing the report, but also all of the great efforts that you, your team Director Katania, as well as Manu Ocrafta's team, put into putting on Canada Day, and a huge thank you to everyone who has volunteered and have been a part of our task force. I know a lot of you have been on it for the last two years, and thank you. It really has paid off, and thank you to everyone who volunteers, and I look forward to all of you continuing to be engaged and volunteer, even though it's structurally changing the day-to-day logistics, pending that council approves this. But any other comments or questions? All right, with that, I'll call the vote. All those in favor, that carries unanimously. And on to notices of motion, so we already dispensed of one, so we have one more notice of motion, and this one is actually returning as it was deferred from the March 24, 2025 regular council meeting, and it's Counselor Martin's Motion Regarding Code of Conduct Review. I will turn it over to Counselor Martin to introduce, and then I think Clerk Boss will just provide a small update, as nobody pulled her Bill 9 report from consent, that was one of the few items we didn't pull, just to give additional context, but Counselor Martin, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you through you, Mayor Salin. So, yes, I had brought forward this motion back in March, we agreed that it would come back to council again, in this case, committee of the whole. I have mixed feelings on it, and I guess I would also defer to Clerk, Clerk Boss in your comments on Bill 9. I agree that if, in fact, the province comes forward with legislation in the near future, then maybe this isn't necessary, and if it also saves us some money in terms of having to do some work or review, I'm all in favor of that. I think the important part is that we find ways of working together effectively and collaboratively. So, I mean, I'd even be willing to withdraw the motion if that seems to be the consensus of the group, but I'll also defer to Clerk Boss for your comments.
I think we'll hear Clerk Boss first, and then I will let you decide how you want to proceed.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. And so the brief introduction, yes, this was introduced in March 2024 at our regular council meeting, and at that time, council did postpone the consideration of the motion. I believe at that time, we were probably hoping to have more of an update on it, or for the bill to be further through the provincial legislature. At this time, the bill has gained second reading and is with the Standing Committee. I know that my professional, my professional group of clerks and treasurers have provided comments in support of a standardized code of conduct for local government and boards across Ontario, as well as many council members from across Ontario have spoken in support of this bill. At this time, without predicting what the province is going to do, I would say that it is very likely that we have a standardized code of conduct for the next term of council, so by November 15, 2026, and it would be in place for the next term of council. At this time, to review our code of conduct, with the timing and our work plan and the cost, my comments would be that I would not be in support of taking on this endeavor with this bill still at the province, and likely coming into effect within the next year and a half.
And just additional context on that, again, at AMO, it was reiterated by the province that they are proceeding with this. Again, the caveat of it is the province, but that was just one other touch point that we heard it as well. But Counselor Martin, how would you like to proceed?
Thank you through you, Mayor Salin. So would it be reasonable to maybe just look around the circle and get a sense, would if I withdraw the motion, does that make sense? So I, procedurally, then, how do I do that? Do I just simply say I'd like to withdraw the motion?
Yes.
I would like to withdraw the motion.
And that has been noted and withdrawn as such. Yes, Counselor Kressman?
Through you, Mayor. About Bill 9, can I speak to that or not?
I mean, technically, it was on the consent agenda item, but I will make an exception. Yes, you may speak to it.
I think it was, we were informed in Ottawa at the conference that they're doing, going to go through clause-by-clause investigation or review of Bill 9, and there was, I believe you spoke on one of the hearings, about some of the, the voting procedure on how you would address, I wouldn't say misconduct or inappropriate behavior, I was, and punitive actions to be taken against a member, and I think that was an area of debate at, in Ottawa as well, that I think, as it currently is proposed, it's requiring a majority. Well, you spoke to it, you, you might want to comment on rather me messing it up.
Sure. So currently, the legislation that is proposed would have potential for further repercussions, I guess, for breaking the code of conduct as a council member, and it's seen as bringing more accountability and transparency to our roles. So what the current proposal is, is that the process would remain very similar, in that you would report any potential breaches of the code of conduct to the integrity commissioner. The integrity commissioner then would conduct their evaluation, investigation, and then if they found a violation, would bring forward the report. However, there are additional included provisions, both for the provincial integrity commissioner of Ontario, to weigh in on certain grievances or issues, and have some jurisdiction, as well as, in the event of something that, my understanding, would need to be pretty egregious of an act, escalation could happen to the point where the integrity commissioner could go to the Ontario provincial integrity commissioner, and if they agree, then they can decide to recommend to council removal of a counselor from the council. If it did escalate to that point, right now, the legislation proposes that it would need to be a unanimous vote of council in order to remove someone from their seat. That, you are right, is still in debate as to what is the correct process and avenue for that. AMO has their stance that it, I believe there's this two-thirds majority that they're looking for, they want it reduced from a full majority. However, members and individual counselors have debated that it should be unanimous, and in fact, when I did go and speak at the committee hearing, one of the opposition members of the Liberal Party asked a really compelling question about, should it be in the jurisdiction of the judicial system, and should it be a judge that makes that ultimate decision? Which personally, I found compelling, in that if you look at our federal system, you have your policymakers, and then it's the courts who then interpret the policy and legislation and make those decisions. That is still yet to be decided by the province, how they choose to proceed, but you are correct, in the third reading, it will be a clause-by-clause reading of the act, and I have pretty good confidence that the committee is quite engaged in the conversation and in providing legislation that is representative of the stakeholders' feedback. So I do think whatever they do come up with, A, I think they're going to stick forward and actually pass and receive royal assent on this piece of legislation, and B, I think that it will be pretty reflective of what the feedback that they have collected is. You're welcome. Any other questions or comments on Bill 9, since we're now talking about it? Okay, great. With that, we will move on to announcements. I do have a few. One is a more technical one about our 2026 budget cycle. Council had previously approved our calendar, however, I'm going to turn it over to CAO Wilmer, as there may be some updates and adjustments.
Thank you, Mayor Salin. Yes, I wanted to let council know that due to the recent departure of key finance staff for the township, it will not be possible to, for us to deliver the budget on the schedule that was previously discussed by council. The revised schedule is a work in progress, and we'll keep you posted, as recruiting for the treasurer position is well underway now.
So, yes, anybody also watching online, the calendar that was approved by council is going to be slightly altered, and we'll keep everyone up to date once we have more details on what the budget rollout process will look like. In terms of other announcements, I did want to send a huge congratulations to all of the junior gardeners who are part of the Wilmot Horticulture Society. Tomorrow evening, they have their final awards ceremony, so big congratulations to everyone who participated in that, and if you are interested in seeing what some of the junior gardeners across the community have grown this year, they also have a display down at the New Hamburg Fall Fair, which turns into my next comment. The New Hamburg Fall Fair is going to be happening from Thursday, September 11th to Sunday, September 14th. It's a really great event, if you've not been before. Lots to see and do, including you still have opportunities to enter any home craft or items of your own that you would like to have judged in the fair, so do be sure to look for any of the fall fair books, as well as I believe you can get them at your school, but also we have some at the community centers and at our main administrative buildings. Counselor Martin?
Just on that, were you going to mention volunteers?
I was going to get to volunteers, but thank you very much. Yes, volunteers, they are still actively looking for volunteers, lots of different opportunities and ways that you can contribute to the success of the fall fair, so please do, again, reach out to the New Hamburg Fall Fair, and information is also in the fair book or on their website, to be able to volunteer. The other one is more of a public service announcement. In case you weren't already aware, the speed camera in front of Sir Adam back in Waterloo, Oxford, is back to 40 kilometers an hour during 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Mondays to Fridays. I know many people have issues with the speed camera program, it is regional, I do want to make very clear, so if you have complaints, questions, or concerns, or if you like it, please do reach out and let myself, as well as my region of Waterloo colleagues know. And just on that, tomorrow, if you are interested, regional staff are presenting to regional council, in particular, on reporting and updating about the current speed camera program. Any other announcements? We'll go to Counselor Dunstall first.
Thank you through you, Mayor. I wanted to announce that the Wilmot Optimist and the New Hamburg Legion are having breakfast on Saturday. I'm not sure what they're serving, but it's going to be very good, and it's going to be inexpensive, so come out, enjoy a nice breakfast, I think it starts at 8 o'clock, and support the community. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to clarify, did you say inexpensive or is expensive?
Inexpensive. I didn't want to say cheap, I didn't want to say cheap.
Right, you'll get a good bang for your buck.
Absolutely.
Okay, Counselor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Salin. Counselor Dunstall and I are having a town hall meeting on September 17, starting at 3:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. It'll be a drop-in style of town hall meeting. We're inviting members of the community to come and talk with us about budget. I guess, based on the change in schedule, we're early in the process, but our goal is to hear from community members what is to hear from community members, what concerns, interests people have, and we will take those forward in the budgetary process.
Great. Any other announcements, councillors? Okay, seeing none. We have no business arising from closed, so I'd be looking for a mover and a second or two adjourned. Moved by councillor Dunstall, seconded by councillor Gressman. All those in favor? And that carries unanimously. Have a great night, everyone.